Good morning, everyone. It's seven o'clock, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. We'll call the city and thirty's policy council committee of the whole quarter. Roll call, please.
Here, here.
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 Here. We have a quarrel. Uh, first item of business this morning is discussion on the downtown riverfront phase two, bid results, and I will call on Kent White. Good morning, Kent.
Good morning. Thank you. Uh, so I've got a memo in the packet along with, uh, kind of a, a drawing, basically, that we'll be talking about in the memo here. So we opened bid results, or we opened bids for the project on April twenty-seventh. Uh, we only received one bid, uh, for phase two. Um, then the amount of that bid was just under five million dollars, uh, for the base bid. Uh, our estimate for that portion of the work was about two point six million. So, you know, recognizing that that's a pretty significant difference, um, we reached out to the bidder, uh, that submitted the bid as well as several of the plan holders, the contractors that downloaded plans and didn't submit bids, just to kind of get a feel for, uh, what's going on in the bidding environment and better understand why the prices were what they were. So, um, we heard kind of some common threats from them, uh, through those conversations, one of them being, you know, kind of the continued shortage of materials, uh, that exists out there for, uh, construction projects, basically. Extended lead times on some of the materials, um, as well as, um, quotes that, uh, contractors were getting from some of their suppliers being only valid for a really short period of time, uh, concerns about workforce availability, um, and even, uh, some of the contractors were unable to get subcontractors, uh, to even respond, to provide a quote to them so that they could assemble their bid. So all of those things combined, I think, generally lead to risk, which a bidder is going to roll into his bid, uh, and reflect that as, as higher prices. So I think that's what's going on with the bid results, um, just to kind of get a handle on where that's at compared to phase one. Uh, we did compare some of the similar items of work between the two projects, uh, like the concrete paving, that kind of thing. And can see that compared to phase one, the prices bid for similar type of work in phase two went up anywhere from forty to two hundred percent. Kind of an average, uh, for those items of work would be an increase of about seventy percent, uh, between those two phases. So that's, that's likely a combination of all of the things, you know, that I mentioned a minute ago. So I guess the question is, where do we go from here? Understanding that the city has been working on, you know, revitalizing the downtown riverfront area for a while, this important project, uh, for the city, so, um, in the interest of trying to help the city find, uh, you know, the next step forward, uh, we did meet with the project management team, talked about the bid results, and, um, one of the potential solutions we arrived at was, uh, considering perhaps a reduced scope on phase two that might consist of, uh, constructing just the trail from Court Street, uh, east along the riverbank to, um, the proposed bridge location. And then keeping that as designed and, uh, leaving the rest of the, uh, that space available for the splash pad, the bathroom, the other parts of that, uh, project, available for that to be constructed as a future. That's something, uh, the city would want to pursue in the future. So that's, that's a potential solution. Let's see. So, yeah, the reduced scope would be, uh, that's, that's what I'm trying to identify in the, in the map in your packet, where we've got that outlined in yellow, that's the trail from Court Street over to the bridge, uh, and then the plaza, the splash pad, the river feature, all of that stuff would be, uh, delayed until some future date. So if the city did choose to go that route, I do have a table in the memo showing those costs just prior to the meeting, I have taken it out of sheet, uh, the details goes out, uh, quite a bit further. If we use the prices from the bid, uh, that we received, the total estimated construction cost to build the trail is about seven hundred thousand dollars. And I also have a table on that handout showing estimated engineering fees all the way back from kind of project inception and preliminary design phase. So that top line there shows, uh, engineering fees prior to April thirty of two thousand twenty-one. So those are fees that the city has already paid, but would be attributable, uh, to this phase of the project. Those are about three hundred thousand. The design fees for this piece that, uh, was just recently bid are about four hundred thousand. And then we're showing, um, a fee reduction of about a hundred thousand dollars, which would be, uh, you know, our, our commitment to the city that we talked about with phase one change order, um, making that budget whole. So it would be a fee reduction of about a hundred thousand dollars there. And then we're estimating our design fees, or, uh, construction administration fees to build this reduced scope project. So the trail to the, to the bridge at a hundred thousand. So the engineering would total about seven hundred and thirty. Add that to the construction costs of the trail to the river, we arrive at about one point four. And potentially, I'll talk about this in a second, if, if the trail and the bridge costs were combined together, you'd be looking at a total estimated project cost of about two point three million. So I guess in conclusion, if the city, uh, wanted to pursue the entire project as bid, uh, obviously additional funding sources would need to be identified to proceed along those lines. If the city is not interested in awarding the contract, uh, as it was bid, we would recommend rejecting the bid that was received, uh, on April twenty-seventh. And then, uh, depending on, uh, you know, where the city chooses to go with this, if you want to pursue a reduced scope, um, project and get some construction done this year, we could, uh, take the bidding documents, revise them to just show the trail construction, uh, get that out for bid as quickly as possible, and potentially still see, you know, some trail construction yet this year. The bridge would still follow the timelines that we've talked about previously, advertising that for bids this fall, construction of the bridge in two thousand twenty-three. So obviously, it's, there's decisions, I think, to be made here, so. Yeah, that, that pretty much sums it up. If, if the city is interested in proceeding with some sort of reduced scope, uh, we also anticipate that we will need to include some sort of parking lot maintenance, uh, in the contract as well. So we would work with city staff to develop, you know, what exactly that consists of and include that in, uh, in the revised scope.
Thanks, Kent.
You bet.
So it's unfortunate that the bids came in where they did, but, um, I guess that's out of our control and we deal with things the way they are, not the way they wish, that we wish they were, right? So, um, I, I, I like the, um, personally, I like the reduced scope that, that's been presented by the project design team for a few reasons. First of all, allows us to move forward with something during this construction season, complete the trail, which was the original intent of the project when it started five years ago. But also, as you pointed out, um, which is important, it allows future council, whether it's this council or future council, to do the improvements as originally planned if conditions change, if, uh, if they want to go out for another bonding, prices somehow turn around. But I do think we need to move forward, and we need to move forward quickly. We have the bidding documents, I don't know why we would wait on anything if the council decides to go with the reduced scope. There's so many unknowns in the world, and we have the bids, um, this, the, the, if we go to bid as soon as possible, as you mentioned, Kent, would that allow construction either, either this season or next season?
Yeah, I think we would phrase the, the completion date in the bidding documents to allow that.
Which would give us more flexibility, which would be beneficial, right?
It should be, uh, beneficial to the bidders, where they could, perhaps they would preserve some of that work until two thousand twenty-three, you know, if, if they're busy yet this year. But it, it certainly would allow them to build it this year if they can.
And then also, obviously, it would utilize, you know, the, the two point two, the one point four plus the ultimate bridge. It allows us to use the one million dollar in bonding, seven hundred thousand dollars has been pledged from the VDIN and keep this project moving forward, which I think is very important. Obviously, it's not the news we wanted to see about, in my opinion, we need to move forward with something that continues the project. That's what I'd be for that. What's the, Jim?
Does your reduced scope, uh, include the bridge?
Yeah.
I guess I would not go with that. I won't go along with it. I don't think we need the bridge.
I, I mean, I would say, what makes you think is going to get any cheaper going forward? You know, in a way, you've kind of started the project, and, um, I don't see it getting, I don't see it getting any cheaper going forward. I mean, and, and all the bids that I'm seeing for, in my work, nothing indicates that it's going to get any less. And, and I think to spend, you know, potentially, you know, one and a half million dollars on a stub of pavement that goes halfway loss of a parking lot down to the river, doesn't make any sense. I mean, I think you either do it all, or you don't do any of it. I think it's, uh, basically, it's a waste of money to, to do what we're proposing. We're not doing up the walk. The actual river walk in, in this whole project isn't getting touched, and that's the nicest part of the river, is being down by the river, um, itself. So I think you either should do it all or none of it, and just tidy up the parking lot. That's my, that's my ten cents.
So when you, you mean the five point nine?
Four point nine.
Four point nine?
I, I mean, because you're going to get a splash pad and you're going to get the parking lot and you, you know, you either do it, a, a pavement to go from there to there for one and a half million dollars, is how many feet is that?
Um, two to three hundred feet, I suppose.
Yeah. See, three hundred feet at one and a half million dollars, it's a pretty expensive footpath. So, and, and if you don't, you know, especially, and I agree with Jim, I mean, the bridge goes nowhere anyway, so I, I just don't see it's worth doing.
Thanks, Anthony. Scott?
We haven't been presented any options for how we might fill the funding gap. And if we were to follow Anthony's suggestion and go ahead and do it all, is there a way that we could fund it? You know, that, there's been a package put together to fund what we were expecting, and now we need more money if we're going to do it all. So let's look at what we might do to find a way to fund it. I think that's an alternative that we need to consider. We can't say we can't do it without even having tried to fund it.
Yeah.
I don't know, doesn't that make sense?
Yeah, I think it makes sense. I think we need to realize too, we're talking about, we're not talking about a small gap, we're talking about a three million dollar gap. I mean, these, these, from my perspective, these prices of what we intended to do originally are way out of whack. We're trying to make a project that includes the original scope of the project of five years ago to have the, the path from, you know, the, the trail connect all the way that allows us to go up to Veterans Park with a, with a, with a bridge that was, uh, put in, that was planned as part of community meetings for this entire project. Uh, we've raised money, we've got two million dollars committed. Of course, one, one, one million of that is bonding dollars. This is not talking about, you know, the three million dollar gap would, would presumably have to go on the tax books. It would have to be, we'd have, I mean, we could maybe fill some of that gap, but I don't know how.
Isn't it only two million? It may be about two point three, or two and a half, right? I mean, we, we expected two point six, and it came in at four point nine.
The total with the alternates is five point nine, right?
At least five point nine.
Five point nine versus two point seven.
So why does it say four point nine?
That's the base.
That's the base.
The base.
So, so that, that's kind of misleading. I mean, can we talk real numbers? I mean, now we're talking six million, not five million. What is the price of the project?
So.
The, the real, the, the bottom line. It says four point nine.
Four point nine, that's the base, the base. We had some, bid some alternates in there, which were, I guess that's not even part of the discussion, if we want to add, if we want to take in that. Part of that was a few amenities, vendor hookups.
Sewer from the.
Sewer, you know, those were, those were.
Right.
Alternates that were bid with the project. We're just looking in comparison to the base, base bids right now, which includes what's the features, uh, splash park, trail, everything right now.
Right, thanks.
Was part of the alternates, part of the splash pad area too?
None.
No, it was.
Thinking water wall or something like that, or?
There was a small water feature that, uh, protrusion that came out, that was one of the alternates, very minor.
But, I mean, I guess my, my point is this, that, that if we, it's not the scenario we wished, um, going back to the beginning of the project, we didn't see any of these, you know, a lot of these things coming. But if we don't find a way to move forward on something, we're basically leaving two million, I, I feel like we're leaving potentially two million dollars on the table to finish the project that we started. Do it in a way that completes it, that allows us to do things in the future if the council decides, or if it has the, uh, funding, or if conditions change. But it at least connects, we don't leave a, a path, you know, uncompleted that we've started, that was the original intent of the project. So, um, again, the, the two point two, some of those costs have already been spent by, they're just allocated to this part of the project.
Right.
Plus there's seven hundred thousand from the VDIN, which is, which is, um, contention upon phase two being completed. So that's seven hundred thousand that we won't have if phase two doesn't be, isn't completed. Uh, there's a million dollars in the bonding for phase two. So if we wish for, you know, things to be different, that's great, but they're not. We've got, I think we've got to find a way to get something done to, to make this project the best that it can be. And I don't think under this scenario with the two point two, and someone built and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that this looks like we would put any of this on tax, you know, this would not be local property tax, uh, levy dollars, or at least a very, very small portion.
So if you were to do this two point three million dollar project, you know, we have the state bond funds of a million dollars, and then if VDIN is still in for seven hundred, we'd of course have to check with them because it would be a reduced scope of seven hundred. The fundraising for this half, hundred and fifty, there's some utility costs up there for seventy-five, maybe a little parking lot dollars for that eleven-five we could take, and then, you know, possibly ARPA funds for three hundred and sixty thousand. So there wouldn't be bonding in that scenario. And then if we looked at base to base, you know, if you did the whole project without alternates, then you have a two point four million dollar gap. So that's what we'd have to come up with, either is there more fundraising, or is there local, local bonding that we would need to do for that if we did the entire project? So.
Your honor. I, um, I agree with you that, that I think we need to keep moving forward. We need to make sure that we're doing it in the most responsible way, and as has been said several times, I mean, circumstances are, they are just what they are. I mean, materials are just way more expensive, and that's out of our control. But I also don't think it's realistic to expect that material prices won't come down at some point. I, I mean, I don't think our economy can survive this, you know, I mean, it's, it's got, it has to, um, you know, correct itself at some point. You know, so, and then, and then as far as the bridge goes, um, I mean, if there's, you know, if, if there's, there's pushback on including the bridge in this particular, you know, at this particular time, um, you know, I would need a reminder on, uh, on what funding would be affected if we didn't include the bridge. But, um, I do think that we need to do something to keep moving forward on the project and, um, and, and just make the best of the situation. I don't think that, um, you know, that, that paying for the, trying to raise the money for the full project is necessary, necessarily, um, what we want to do because, you know, why do we want to take all that money and spend it on material that's seventy percent over, you know, what it would have cost a few years ago? Um, so, you know, I just, I, I would just like to hear more, more thoughts from people on, on how we can get something done, and I think leaving, um, leaving the door open for future, you know, once the material price does come down, um, you know, looking at a phase three that would finish off some of the, the things that were in the original plan. But I would, I'd like to hear what other people have to think.
Thanks, Tom. Yeah, Bill.
Just going to think out loud a little bit. If VDIN is in on this for seven hundred thousand, and if it's really towards the bridge, then don't we really need to do the bridge because we have to match the state bonding dollars? So if we get a million dollars, we have to put a million dollars into it from those other sources. So if we didn't do the bridge and didn't get the seven hundred, we couldn't use all the state bonding dollars either. That's just something to think about through that.
Yeah, and I think that the way that the project design team originally laid it out to have the bid, bridge bid separately, um, that's the path that people have been following, including local manufacturers who are putting their own time and energy into engineering something that they come up and makes, you know. I, I like that idea to keep that same timeline, it gives people that were working on that the ability to present something. It's not a making a commitment by any means for the council, once we get those numbers, you can decide. But this, we have the, we have the documents for the bids, the bidding documents, we're able to go out for the, for a reduced scope. I mean, if we want to go forward, I don't know what waiting, I don't know what benefit waiting does. I mean, if we look at the last two years, I think that can be an example that waiting around on things isn't, isn't advantageous.
I think we need to get an explanation on the VDIN money if it can be used for other than the bridge, because I'm not for the bridge. I will not vote for the bridge.
And also, I mean, if we're not doing the whole scope, is it, is it, is it going to be pro rata, you know? I mean, if, if they were expecting a splash pad and a bridge, and that's what they were giving their seven hundred thousand for, and now we're not doing a splash pad, you know, will it, will it only be half of it?
We need to, we need to look into the VDIN money before we make any decisions.
And Andrew, would we, again, thinking out loud, if they're in for that, but would we then need to actually bid these two together, the bridge and the trail? Because if something were to fall apart, I mean, again, to, to keep all those funding sources together, I don't know.
Phase two, the, yeah, we, and certainly, I don't mean to speak for the VDIN, we can get the information you need. They've always been, they've always talked about the bridge, they've never been interested in the splash pad, um, they've been interested in the phase two being completed, that we didn't just start phase one and then end. That's been their main concern. So they, they've been very excited about the fact that there's potential for a local manufacturer, that there's art included in, there's, they've, that's what they've always talked about. Again, I don't want to speak for them, but I've had conversations with them, and that's always from the beginning of this project, Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, but they've been very, you know, committed, they were the first ones to commit, but they were also, very clear that they were committed to, uh, those funds if phase two, you know, if the project was completed, so, um, is that accurate?
It is, and, and they were originally interested in the amphitheater, and when that was removed, they kind of shifted their focus to the bridge and that.
Could you speak up a little bit, please?
I don't know if I can.
Just look at me. Yeah, just stand in front of them.
I said, the, their original interest was in the amphitheater, and when that was removed, they shifted that focus to the bridge, and it's been on the bridge since then. So I, you know, I, I guess I would agree that they have talked about for the last, at least year and a half, that they want to be part of the bridge construction, knowing that it's the last component of the entire project. They want to be the last money in and make sure the community buys in, and, and that the project is going to be complete with their dollars.
Would, would it make sense at this point, like, we've got the information, there's so many unanswered questions, can we come back on Monday night with some different scenarios of what, you know, going to bid soon, waiting for the bridge, not, and doing nothing, what those three scenarios might be? We can ask our questions, we can have some disagreements, and we can both move on. Does that, does that make sense?
So basically, what you're saying, if they're interested in the bridge with their, if they're still in for the seven hundred thousand, with the six hundred thousand dollars from the state, then the bridge is not out of the taxpayer's pocket pretty much at all?
The six hundred thousand from the state for LCCMR is really being used on phase one already, so.
Okay.
That had the bridge in there originally, that was part of the ask of LCCMR, but then we've been working with them because of the deadline to expend those funds, that that all gets spent on phase one.
Okay.
So we're kind of modifying that budget and pulling the bridge out of the LCCMR, it's all part of that trail in the first part.
There are some local dollars as well from the National Department for the Arts, that if we go with some options with the bridge, there's a local match, um, potentially of a hundred thousand dollars. So there's some funding, but the, the intent is exactly what you say, Brent, to not have the bridge be out of the taxpayer's pocket.
That would be the only way right now that I would look at it, is if the funding was strictly none of the city dollars at all into the bridge, otherwise I won't be in favor of the bridge either.
Sure, thanks, Brent. Yeah, Justin?
I mean, I, we had a good, good discussion, and it's too bad we, we couldn't do it all, we've laid a path out, and I think, you know, I, I hope to see prices come down when, you know, inflation gets a little bit more under control and contractors get caught up and supply catches up. But one thing too, to remind everybody is, aside from having the one million and the seven hundred, if we didn't move forward, we're going to have a pretty big fee regardless to pay for their services and their design and all that. So, I mean, we, we do nothing and still have to pay, you know, probably a half million dollars or plus. So I, I feel like something is better than nothing. It, it seems like a lot to spend one point four to get a sidewalk, but it's really, you know, a lot of that isn't sidewalk. I mean, the sidewalk portion is, is just a smaller percentage of it, unfortunately, and a lot of it's work they've already done, and, you know, if we don't move forward with the entire thing. So I think we can get to at least something, we've got money out there to, in a sense, use, and we have fees that we got to pay anyway if, if we didn't do anything, so. Nice to find out more from the VDIN and make sure we're making the right decision, but.
We certainly bring that information to Monday night and let the council make the decision. Is that fair for everybody?
Can we get an updated sources and uses, including phase one?
Including phase one?
Yep.
Sure.
Thanks.
Everybody good? Thank you, Kent. We'll, uh, see you Monday night. Oh, you're up, you're up to number two. It's all about phase one.
All right. So, uh, yeah, I've got another memo in the packet about phase one parking lot. So originally, before the project, uh, started construction over there, the old parking lot had a hundred ninety-nine stalls, it was sixty-degree angled parking, and parking stalls eight and a half feet wide. So knowing that we've gotten some feedback here at council meetings and, and heard it from, uh, some of the business owners adjacent to the parking lot, we've looked at, you know, what is the current design that's currently striped out there, compared that to some potential, uh, alternative layouts that perhaps, um, would meet the needs that are being requested for, you know, potentially modifying that parking lot layout. So like I said, the old parking lot had a hundred ninety-nine stalls, they were eight and a half feet wide. Uh, the, the parking lot layout that's striped out there right now is ninety-degree, uh, you know, just straight in parking, those stalls are nine feet wide. There's a hundred and twenty-seven stalls as it's currently striped. The minimum recommended stall width for any parking lot is eight and a half feet. So we, we're a little bit oversized, um, I would call nine feet a comfortable with, for, for parking stalls, is typically what we try to aim for, uh, in parking lots. We have gotten some feedback from the business owners, actually actively solicited feedback from some of the business owners there, um, to get their thoughts and how is the parking lot working for them and their customers. Results were kind of mixed, some of them thought, just leave it as it is, maximize the number of available parking spaces, others thought that, uh, changing it back to an angled parking situation, uh, would be better, uh, just to ease customers, you know, using the parking lot. So we did put together two alternative layouts, um, one of them is still ninety-degree parking, but widening out the stalls from nine feet to ten feet. So what that would do, it would eliminate fourteen stalls from the current layout that's striped right now, um, and you would have an end result of a hundred and thirteen, uh, total parking stalls. If we were to, the other alternative would be to switch it to sixty-degree angled parking, uh, nine-foot wide stalls with that, that eliminates twenty-five stalls, uh, from the striping that's out there now, and you would end up with a total of a hundred and two, uh, parking stalls. So, um, the parking lot isn't, the, the top layer of pavement isn't built yet, so. So, um, the parking lot isn't, the, the top layer of pavement isn't built yet, so, you know, we have opportunity to kind of talk about this and if we want to make changes to how the parking lot design is, is striped, we certainly can do that before the permanent pavement markings go on after that top layer of pavement is built. So I guess, to summarize, the design goal was to sort of maximize the number of available parking spaces. However, if, if, uh, the city feels that a different layout would be more user-friendly, that's certainly something we can consider.
Thanks, Kent. Justin?
With, with the updated information you just provided, it sounds like the businesses have been active in, in, uh, part of this process. Are they aware that they'll lose stalls if we were to go to the angle or the, because in both scenarios, they will lose stalls, correct?
Correct, in either of these.
That'd be my concern is, is are they supportive of losing? It sounds like, I don't know if they'd be in support of losing stalls or if they were thinking they'd be able to add stalls. Because, you know, they went from 199 to, to 127.
Correct.
I know. That'd be my, I mean, if, if they're on board with it, I mean, angled probably makes it easier for just getting in and out and safety, you don't have to turn around as much. Um, but I'd want to make sure that they're in support of losing more stalls by adjusting what's currently there.
Your honor.
I noticed we have in attendance someone who is closely connected to the business community. Lisa, do you, do you have any comments or feedback that you'd want to share?
Just that, that people are concerned about if people are comfortable using parking the way it is. I think that level of comfort has been, uh, skewed a little bit because they're still working around construction.
Sure.
Fencing being up, they don't currently have the full number of stalls that are available, so it's hard to make a comparison. I know just from our point of view at the chamber, the lot even pre-construction was never full. So I think losing a few stalls like we have is okay, but even more might not be the best thing. I think people also need to, um, as customers, you know, they're doing 90-degree turns if they're parked, or 90-degree parking at Fleet Farm, at Service Food, at, you know, you name it, any other parking lot. It's just that I think customers feel a little, um, uncertain just because they're in and out of construction.
Sure.
That's, and, and I have talked with the businesses there. They want to make sure that their customers have a comfortable place to park, otherwise they won't park there.
Do, sorry, Lisa, do you feel like, uh, the businesses would have a strong, like, if we asked them, if there was a way to ask the businesses, would they have a strong confidence? Like, would they say?
I don't think you'd find a majority.
And we did go door to door. Sure. Walton and Mick's staff knocked, I think went into every business on the block.
Yeah.
And it was mixed bag.
Okay. I just figured that's who we'd hear from if we were to make a change. Let's make a change to what the majority wants, so we're not, but doesn't sound like we have that answer.
What did we have before all this started? I can't remember. Was it angled?
Angle parking.
Yeah, because, I mean, you go to Fleet Farm Walmart and you watch, you may get more parking, but then you watch the people who pull in and half of them are sitting on the line or whatever, because it's harder to get into a 90, so then you're losing a spot anyway. Or you're having somebody with a ding door that ain't real happy.
Yeah, I think the, you know, I, I, I mean, I think angled parking would be great. It's just, you know, is there enough parking in that lot and on the surrounding streets to be able to support all the people that want to use that space and patronize those businesses?
So are you looking for direction on Monday night? Is that?
That would be fine.
Yeah, I mean, so let's do what we can between now and Monday night to talk to as many businesses as we can, um, if now it's public. And, and we'll just make a decision Monday night with, with the best information we have. So new business, if you can send something out, Lisa, to, uh, let us know, and we know in that it won't be unanimous.
I think a, a little bit, it's, as Lisa said, there's kind of almost 30 stalls that they're not using today. So even if you went with kind of the herringbone kind of option of angled parking, you're going to gain another 30 slots that presently are physically in use.
And I think that plays into it too, where people are concerned about losing stalls. They're not using, the, the full capacity that the lot will have isn't available at this point.
And there's kind of a lot of construction stuff still going on, so that also impedes movement flow, you, you know, the moment you're, you really can't flow around the car park.
Yeah.
It, because of the fencing, so.
To, to that point, I mean, I would be in favor of that. The first option you gave with angled parking with 127 stalls, as long as we don't.
Yeah, I mean.
Hear a lot of, you know, I mean, that makes the most sense. It's still nine feet wide, you said.
The angled parking would be 102 stalls.
Correct.
And the, the 90-degree parking.
127, 127 for angled parking.
Get the very top of the sheets out the top right corner.
It's highlighted.
Oh.
So the 90-degree would be 113 stalls. The angled parking, you bring that down to 102.
Here's a.
I'm in favor of the angled one. Me too. Justin and I are going to die on that.
Angled would be really nice.
Let's hear, all right, from the businesses that.
They're easier to back out of than the straight back.
And keep in mind too, you know, when you survey the business owners on that lot, that's not a significant number.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, they have an idea of what they're looking for, but you also have, what do the customers and clients want too?
Yeah.
A business might want more stalls, but if a customer, again, isn't.
I would see people complaining more about the 90-degree parking than the angled parking with fewer stalls. That's my prediction.
Sounds like that's kind of the direction we're leaning. If we hear something by, uh, different, change our mind by Monday night, we'll take action Monday night. Yes, Brian?
Yes, your honor, uh, we just wanted to present this to you, you know, just on concerns we've received from public. Um, I think on the contractor's schedule, we just need to, we'd like some resolve prior to them putting the final wear course and final striping. So that being said, my understanding of the schedule, I think we could even wait till, uh, first council meeting in June. That way to get, garner more feedback.
Sure.
As an option too. So I just don't want to think we have to know on Monday.
Sure.
Uh, just want to stay ahead of it on this aspect, so.
Great, sounds good. So, yeah, I guess we'll just leave it to staff to see if there's other options, opportunities to work with the chamber to get as much business information, whenever it needs to be made, we'll make that decision, bring it to the council, we'll make that decision.
That's fine, yeah.
Thanks, Kent.
I've got one last thing on the parking lot.
Yep.
So, um, on the, the north edge of that parking lot, uh, what used to be out there was just pavement that kind of buttoned up to the buildings. So when we, um, constructed the new parking lot, it now includes a, uh, kind of a surmountable curb along the north edge of the alley and concrete pavement behind that, between the curb and the building, um, intending that concrete area to be sort of a low maintenance boulevard. Uh, during construction, one of the business owners approached us about, uh, sort of flattening out that curb in the middle of the block to sort of provide a, a low-profile opening across that curb, basically. Um, then our intent when we agreed to put that in was that that would work for all of those businesses on that block. Since then, of course, we've, we've gotten requests from other businesses that would like to have the curb knocked down, uh, immediately adjacent to their building as well. We could do that, but it would obviously require some remove and replacement of new concrete and curb in order to make that happen at this point. We've estimated the cost to put a new curb cut in if, at any location at about $6,000 each location, if, if that's something, uh, that we proceeded with. Um, but prior to making any sort of changes to this, we wanted to bring it forth to the city council and have some discussion about it, um, and see where, uh, where opinions might lie on that. Part of what's going on with, you know, is concerns about the, the bumps that are happening trying to, um, move over the surmountable curb is that the, again, the top layer of pavement isn't on, so there's a drop-off, about an inch off the curb as it is right now. That'll go away, you know, of course, once the top layer of pavement is on.
And what was there before? Was it nothing, right?
Pavement to the building.
Yeah.
So the curb is going to help us control, you know, runoff.
Yeah.
Other than that, the way it was before.
And it's not, it's not a, like a full, full curb, it's just a.
It's, it's, it's what we call surmountable. It just sort of rolls up and over.
And I imagine the concern is, is going into their building just for patrons to be able to walk right in versus... How many businesses would that be at 6,000 a pop? That's, it seems to be kind of a lot.
Yeah. I mean, I would say if they want changes, they could pay for it.
They probably said they want it back how it was. Um, I, I mean, the other one was I know Sears was concerned about the height of backing up to their loading ramp. Is, are they included in this?
I know our staff has been talking to them, yes.
Because I know that was one of their concerns was that, uh, it's, you know, they're, they're loading dock, and now when they back onto it, the, the two are not obviously at the same height anymore.
Um, I had a question on the, um, so the curb cuts, we've done curb cuts out on union, like for, uh, handicap accessibility. It doesn't necessarily have to be, I mean, and I apologize if you cover this, I was reading something else, but, um, it doesn't necessarily have to be done as part of this project. We could go, I mean, if we put the top coat in, let people live with it for a year, see how it works, and then if, if, and, right? I mean, it could be done at a later time if it absolutely was necessary. Is that accurate?
You certainly could. You could rework it. I don't know if we could, at that point, do it under the contract.
Right, but I mean, we've, we've gone out and we've cut curbs in union and stuff. I mean, it's, it, the, it's already done, right? I mean, it's not like we're saving money by, you know, doing it as we're building it. It's already, the concrete's already there. So if we put the top coat on and they give them an accurate representation of what it's going to be like to see, see, you know, rather than, you know.
And they come back to it if it really becomes an issue for.
Sure. Well, we've, like, I'm thinking about out front of the, the, is it the airport or wherever it is downtown, we put a curb cut in there to accommodate, um, handicap bus and parking, and it's something that we can do after the fact into an existing curb. So I would, I think it might be a little premature to, before we even see the final product, to go out and start cutting curbs, but that'd be my thought.
And I think that something like a loading dock is obviously, you know, a little different than somebody just having to take an extra step over a curb, so I didn't mean to be so cruel and callous in my remarks earlier.
Worth this to that.
I think that makes sense, but maybe just have an open line of communication, letting them know that, you know, we can do this and this after it's finalized and we've got some time to use it. But as far as that goes, I'm, I'm good with that, but as far as Anthony said, I don't know, that might be something we need to address.
Well, it's kind of along the lines of the other one. It sounds like June, June, sometime in June is when the final, the top coat is down, so if we can have communication with those businesses, including Sears, to see if there's anything that needs to be done at the time of actual construction to, to accommodate.
Yeah, because currently.
If you're going to do this, then this should be done prior to the top coat.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, that's what I mean, like, just.
Unless I would say would need to be a decision soon.
Yeah. Yeah, because currently, when they back up to the dock, before their trucks are level, but now with the pavement being down, it's lift, lifting up that rear end because their front end's going down.
Yep.
So you won't really know, like you said, until we get that pavement in there and you can see how their vehicles are level.
Okay, all right. Guess we'll make a decision on that Monday night.
We'll talk with Sears, particularly.
Got a specific one?
Yep.
And for sure by Monday, we'll talk.
Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Kent.
We're good.
Don't tell them what I said. All right. Uh, moving along, we'll, next item of, uh, discussion is Public Improvement 6079, which is the 2022 Sidewalk Program. Brian Yvora, good morning, Brian.
Thank you. Good morning, your honor, and members of the council. Um, yeah, staff, we've reviewed the sidewalk rates from the 2021 program, and, uh, we did some solicitation, and before we right now, as what we're trying to present is for the, uh, Public Improvement 6079, which is the 2022 Sidewalk and Driveway Program rates. Uh, we're making a few, uh, the following adjustments, um, of course, across the board, but I don't think it's very significant, uh, but we feel these rates, uh, which includes our engineering costs and our share, uh, of this program. But like I mentioned, this is applied to the concrete sidewalks within a right-of-way, which is a usually 100% petition project, um, driven by the petition of the owner. The city, yeah, we, we, we allocate about $3,000 a year for this, uh, for our share of this program and that. So over the past years, it's been well-received and it continues to be a successful, uh, process and everything, and I just wanted notes for any interested people and associated with the program to contact, uh, Troy Haugen, my engineering staff, who manages this program and that, and he can walk you through the process. So at this time, I'm requesting to initiate Public Improvement 6079, which is 2022 Sidewalk and Driveway Program, and to approve these rates for the 2022, uh, Sidewalk Program.
Thanks, Brian. We can do this, bring this to the council.
I'll offer that, your honor.
Thanks, Jim.
I'll second.
Thanks, Krista. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Um, next item is MINDOT Master Partnership Agreement. Again, Brian Yvora.
Yes, thank you. Um, just, uh, before we right now is the, uh, MINDOT Master Partnership Program. This is on a five-year term. It is up for expiration June 30th of this year. Uh, this is a standard umbrella contract, which allows local agencies such as a city and MINDOT to exchange goods and services. It also allows MINDOT, if requested and authorized by a local agency, to deliver small routine maintenance services to local agencies such as a city. Uh, and there's an example in the disagreement under Exhibit A that shows some of the services we do render from MINDOT. Um, I will admit, we don't use it a significant amount, however, we do use it for any state aid, uh, on our state aid rails for any speed studies when those, um, are requested. So at this time, I'm just requesting to approve the MINDOT partnership of contract, um, with, between the city of Fergus Falls and MINDOT.
Thank you, Brian.
For any questions?
Any questions for Brian? We can move this to the council by motion.
I'll.
Thanks, Caroline.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Justin. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. MS4 annual meeting.
Yes, your honor, uh, just quick, yeah, uh, part of, uh, the city of Fergus Falls is part of the MS4, uh, MPCA Stormwater Pollution and PDS Program. Um, part of the conditions of the permit is that we have to hold a public meeting. Uh, and on that form, I'm requesting the council set the MS4 Stormwater Public Meeting for June 21st, 2022, and in these council chambers beginning at 5:30 PM. I would just like to note right now with this, uh, program, everything's been going well, but we did receive notice from MINDOT that we are getting auditing, audited by them. Uh, it's quite the, we just got notice of it. I have staff, Matt Harrington, that's been working. He leads this program as well, but it seems to be going quite well, but it takes some time.
Someone like to offer a motion to bring this to the council on Monday night?
I'll make that, your honor.
Thanks, Anthony.
I'll say.
Thanks. Justin? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? That motion carries. All right, next up is, uh, Ferber Park Survey. We'll call in Public Works Director Guy Taylor. Good morning, Guy.
Good morning. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Back in 2020, Petal Fergus Falls was given permission by the council to apply for a grant to improve the trails out at Ferber Park, the mountain bike trails. With that grant, now MINDOT is requiring an archaeological survey be done on that property. Just to its location, the geography, there's suspect signs out there that needs to be investigated. So MINDOT will pay for 80% of the grant or for the project, and then the city will be responsible for 20% of that. Our responsibility then would be $5,530.49 to participate in this. And if, when the results come in, there may be some changes, some modifications to the trail to be done, but the grant award is $75,000. Significant grant for our out-of-pocket cost of $5,500 bucks.
Thanks, Guy. So we can bring this to the council Monday night by motion?
I'll make that.
Thank you. Brent?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Okay, Tom, second? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Thanks, Guy. Next, we have an update on the 2022 building permits and projects. We'll call in Building Inspector Jason Schutzle. Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'd like to give you an update on the trend of the last three years of the Building Department and what's been going on in the city. If we could start with the commercial projects of 2020. We had a slow start to the year, a slight pickup in the second and third quarter. Small businesses were really focused for new buildings, like a coffee hut, stuff like that is kind of where we were. We didn't have real great numbers, mostly maintenance and repair on our buildings that we have existing is what commercially 2020 looked like. But when we jumped over to the residential side of 2020, we had a tremendous takeoff and remodel of existing properties, which contributed to the fact that we had a lot of new construction come in that year for housing. We had 41 building permits for new houses come in in 2020. It was the highest number we had in 20 years. We still stayed high at 35 is what we did end up building that year for new housing. But with material getting pricey and tough to get trusses and stuff, we lost six in that process. Instead of having 41, we went to 35 builds. Commercially, in 2021, we had a strong start. We had a great first and second quarter. Lots of remodeling, starting with taking some of our older buildings and starting to get into remodeling those for new uses. It was really good. Those empty buildings were starting to fill up slowly. But then on the residential side, we still were in a bit of a hit. The remodeling of our older original housing stock went up, but our new house building only went up by 16 new builds that year, so it halved what we had the year before. So we're starting to decline in the residential of new builds, but really good on remodels because as those new houses were built the year before, people moved out of those older housing stock. Newer families moved into the area, started rebuilding our original housing stock, which is really good. Which takes us to the commercial of 2022. And we have a really strong start this year. We have a lot of great projects, a lot of bigger new projects, banks, et cetera, stuff like that. And we really boomed this year with the reuse of older buildings. You know, our sunmar buildings, our old key dolls building, those are all filling up and coming up with some really good uses this year. Expectations are through the roof for the third quarter. We have a lot of plans out there coming in, questions, and it's going to be really good. Our balance, though, I think, and this is where we wanted to get to, was our balance of new buildings to reuse of old buildings is about equal. You know, so I mean, across the board, we're healthy commercially. Residentially, 2022, we're taking a little bit of a hit. Our expectations are about six to eight new houses this year, talking to our contractors. We're hoping for a really good remodel season, you know, keep that infill going on our older stock. We'll see a lot of flipping this year from some of those older rental homes that are coming up for sale, people moving out of. Yeah, but there's not a lot out there. The biggest challenge when I talk to our developers and builders is available lots. Yeah. You know, in a good location. We have some infill lots out there, but they're not ideal for what they want to do. So that's a little bit of a struggle that we have. And to conclude with, you know, housing projects are slow, although remodel has been great on our residential side. We've seen that high trend of housing in 2020, hoping to get back up there. But I'd like to point out, the numbers that I gave you show a lot of dollar amounts, and that's not really a healthy way to see how the city is going building-wise. But building permit-wise, since 2015, we have doubled in our building permits, you know, over the last seven years prior to that. And in 2021, we've seen a high of 579 building permits, which put us at a 30-year high. So I mean, we're healthy. We're good. The work is out there, the infill is happening, and I think we're going in the right direction for what we wanted commercially, to fill these buildings and get new buildings. So, yeah, it's been good. Any questions?
Question. When you say new homes, is a twin home, one home, or...
They count as two individual homes.
That counts as two individuals.
Yep.
Because there seems to be a lot of twin homes going in.
There is, and that's moving our older population out of those in, inside the city homes, the original stock, out into new stock, and then the new families are jumping right in there, making them their own. And lots of neighborhoods are really starting to spiff up. And you see it across the board, everywhere on permits. It's not just one location in town, it's all over.
That's great news, Jason. Justin?
Question. We've talked about this in the past about looking at city-owned property, land. You had mentioned buildable lots, I mean, and we had a shortage of a project down here. I mean, are we capitalizing on potentially any city land that we should be actively looking to sell for homes to be built when we're looking for revenue for other things within the city? I mean, we talked this morning about across the river. There's other things in town we could look to use that, those funds for too, but I don't know. Just want to make sure if we're hearing from developers that they need buildable lots and we're sitting on land that we could sell, we should probably take advantage of that. Not saying that that money would be used for this, but just in general, I don't know. I don't recall us, I know we've talked about it, but I don't recall us like diving into all the city-owned land.
I think the Port Authority's having those discussions.
Oh, perfect.
I mean, we, obviously, that's the dairy property, which hopefully we can get that concluded.
Right.
I mean, that would obviously be good stock, and then there's still the Noggin, which is, part of that is platted.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Just a quick question out of curiosity. Has material pricing had much of an effect, chilling effect on the building?
No, not commercially. Residentially, just because it's tough to get material.
Okay.
Commercially, they're telling me it's about 14 to 30% increase. So it's, it's nothing that they would...
Okay. Interesting. Yeah. Because I'm doing a little remodel myself, and with the two-by-four being, you know, four times what it was not too terribly long ago, it, well, it's had a chilling effect on my budget, but I'm glad to hear that people are still, you know, using our contractors and buying materials, so.
Really going after it.
That's good. Good.
Thanks for the good news, Jason. Thanks for the work that you and your department do. One thing I just want to plug, like, so we talk about new construction, we talk about the reuse of commercial buildings. I think there's been discussions with HRA, with Habitat for Humanity, with city staff about some of the lots that, some of the houses and vacant lots that have been acquired through probate or through foreclosure, whatever it is that the city owns. Let's make sure we keep our, you know, make sure we're providing affordable housing as well, and the city's doing what they can to some of those smaller houses, those infill lots you're talking about. I think those do fill a need. I think there's ways that we can get, you know, obviously, we talk about affordable housing with the price of construction, $300,000 is not a, you know, that's great. That's great for our economy and families, but let's keep in mind the affordable housing and what do we can do.